Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order and state that this meeting is being held in compliance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, Title 1975, Chapter 231, which was properly noted and has been posted and certified by the clerk. The fire exits are the door you came in, and that door marked exit. Cole Rolfe.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Here.
Ms. Padula.
Here.
Ms. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Schindler.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Mayor Francis.
Here. Please join me with the public assad. Join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so tonight we have a presentation by the County Center for Prevention regarding marijuana, and I'm going to ask Nick Luizy and Anne Marie Shaffer to come on up and tell us about marijuana. Because as you all know, there's a lot of conversations about growing, about selling, medicine, medicinal, so I asked the center to come down and give us some information and guidance on that. So, thank you for coming.
Well, thank you for having us. And just the clarification, I don't work at the Center for Prevention, I work for the county of Sussex. I'm the coordinator of the Office of Alcohol and Substance Free Services, so I was asked by the center and actually the regional coalition, of which I'm a member, for helping Sierra communities to speak about the topic. And Anne Marie Luiza, also part of the regional coalition and works at the center.
Yes, I've been at the center for eight years. I'm a member of the regional coalition, as well as the director of recovery support policies at the Center for Prevention and Council. I've been a substance cannabis over thirty years, other than vice detective. Thank you for having us.
We, it was brought to our attention that HOPACON, considering moving forward with the potential of opening a dispensary for medical marijuana. And we are not here to say that we're against medical marijuana. There are certainly anecdotal and some scientific research that shows that medical marijuana is effective in some cases. But our concern is more toward the drive for legalization of recreational marijuana, and how that will affect communities that have already in place medical marijuana dispensaries. I don't know if the council's aware that Governor Murphy has said openly that if and when it becomes legal recreationally, he expects the medical dispensary to become recreational dispensaries. So you're kind of worried about the door opening to that, if it should occur. Now, I'm not here to tell you that you shouldn't have a dispensary, but there are some things I, there are some questions that I would want to ask if I was considering it. One, if a dispensary were to come to town, how would that dispensary appear? What would be our experience? Would it be a storefront? Would it be a, what was the building? I believe on the statute they have regulations as to how the building is supposed to be maintained and how it's supposed to look. That would be a question I would want to ask. Where would it be located, a dispensary? One of the main issues for most dispensaries is transportation to and from the dispensary and parking. And if you look at the idea that recreational marijuana may be down the road, and this dispensary is expected to become a recreational dispensary, how is that going to affect the traffic and parking in the town? Now, I can tell you from my experience, I happened to drive through Massachusetts on vacation when they opened up their dispensaries for recreational use. And out of curiosity and, you know, professional research, I said, let's go take a look at it. My wife was not pleased with me for doing her side trip, and she didn't want to do that. She hates side trips when I do that, but I said, let's go take a look. So we took a, we took a drive past this dispensary, and it was interesting. They had uniformed police officers directing traffic outside the dispensary. There was no public parking in the parking lot of the dispensary. It was in a commercial business district. But when I, when I asked a few people some questions about it, the response I got was that when it became recreational use, they arranged for a parking facility several miles away from the dispensary where you would go to park, and you would take a shuttle bus to the dispensary to get your marijuana, and then you'd take the shuttle bus back to the parking lot. That was, that was done to avoid traffic congestion, yet they still need uniformed police to help in traffic when you're on by. And there was still a line outside the dispensary of people waiting to get in. And approximately forty-five members of people who came from all over the state to get their recreational marijuana. Now, I'm not saying that that would happen here, but it was something that you need to consider when you're considering establishing a dispensary that may become a recreational use dispensary marijuana. In states where marijuana has gone from medical to recreational, these dispensaries were all stepping in. They opened up as medical marijuana dispensaries. Once it became recreational use, in that state, they were, they were almost automatically recreational use marijuana dispensaries. Some of the things they found in some of these states that are just medical marijuana is that there's some illegal sales going on because people are getting it. In New Jersey, the governor signed a bill in July that expanded the program for medical marijuana. Almost there in medical marijuana, but just not in the law in New Jersey because he was looking to avail it to people with a wide variety of medical issues. They've shown, they've shown in some of the states where medical marijuana is used or medical marijuana is legal, like New Jersey, that the access to youth has increased. So even though they're saying youth will not be permitted to use marijuana, even if it becomes recreational use, it won't be permitted under twenty-one, it's still getting to youth. And they have seen an increase in the use of marijuana. The whole conversation about recreational and medical marijuana has led to a significant decrease in the perception of harm among young people and other vulnerable populations about marijuana and its use. And there's a recent study that came out of England. Unfortunately, there's no, not a lot of study being done in the United States because of the federal ban on marijuana because it's regulated as a level-one, schedule-one drug thing. So there's not a lot of research being done here, but a lot of the research that is being done is being done in Europe. And recently, the Lanta, Lanta Psychiatry in England released a report showing that THC, the high THC levels in marijuana are causing significant psychological illnesses for people who are using it on a daily basis. You don't know what it's going to do because of lack of research. A lot of the medical, the people who are in favor of medical marijuana are using anecdotal support rather than, not, rather than real scientific proof. You can get a marijuana card much, a medical marijuana card much more easily after a couple of bills that were passed in New Jersey. You can get it for ALS, you can get it for anxiety, you can get it for cancer, you can get it for chronic pain, or glaucoma, inflammatory bowel disease, including Crohn's disease, retractable skeletal spasticity, spasticity, migraines, multiple sclerosis, muscular dystrophy, opioid use disorder. You have a heroin epidemic going on, you all know about it, you've heard about it forever. Now they are saying that you can get a medical marijuana card if you have opioid use disorder. I don't know if that's a great idea personally, but I have a family member who has opioid use disorder, I don't know that I would say don't get a marijuana card. PTSD they're using it for, seizure disorder, including epilepsy, terminal illness, and Tourette's syndrome. And a lot of these cases, a lot of these people with these illnesses are saying that it helps them, and it may very well be helping them. But there are prescription drugs that are now available that contain many of the same ingredients that are helping these people. Some of those prescription drugs that are approved by the FDA with a cannabino, which is the non-intoxicating part of marijuana like that helps with seizures and everything else, and all of these other disorders and all of the medical illness. You can get epidolics for seizures, which is an FDA-approved drug which has cannabino in it. Genabino is another pill that treats nausea and helps boost appetite between the therapy patients. And then nabalone, which is another FDA-approved drug that has the same or similar chemical compound that cannabino has. So there are medications available. In two thousand, in July of this year, they expanded the medical marijuana bill to include raising the monthly limit from two ounces to three ounces, and it's unlimited for terminal usage. Authorization period is now to a year for medical use, so you don't have to go back to the doctor every ninety days like you used to, to get the reauthorization authorization for medical use. It's good for a year. Physicians assistants and advanced practicing nurses are now allowed to write, and they can't prescribe it because they're not prescribed one, but they write a recommendation, they write a note saying this person should have medical marijuana, that's how they get the card. We now have home delivery, which is available in New Jersey. So if you, if you're concerned about the distance that you may have to go to get your medical marijuana, these facilities are now allowed to deliver it to your home. And edibles are now allowed, whereas wasn't allowed before. It's not to say that, I'm not saying that HOPACON shouldn't do it, but I think HOPACON should think very hard about the distance where medication, especially if recreational use is passed. And especially if you're thinking about the juvenile, the youth. Recent studies showed that the medical marijuana laws on juvenile marijuana use found that they were consistently higher in states that passed it and soon passed medical marijuana Some of the other considerations besides security, traffic congestion, perception of harm by youth, and location of a dispensary, you also, if I were considering this, I would also be concerned about safety. I'm a retired police officer, I always think about safety. Is there going to be a security at the dispensary, event any kind of incident, especially after it's closed, you know, breaking and things like that? A lot of considerations to think about before you have a dispensary open up in a part area. My biggest response to that is, if I can get it delivered to my house, why bother having them put it down, especially if recreational use becomes legal? And it's automatically considered, or not automatically, but the governor has said the medical facilities will become recreational facilities if recreational marijuana is banned. There's something to be concerned about. I could also throw out the distance for you and to have the substance use overview for Sussex County from two thousand and eighteen, and I'd like to just point out that we do have a very big heroin epidemic in the county. But our treatment admissions in the county ranked one, two, and three are heroin, alcohol, and marijuana. Marijuana is the third highest drug that people receive treatment for in the county. And I don't know if you're aware of this, but in ranking communities within Sussex County, the number-one community for substance use and marijuana treatment in Sussex is Newton, number-two is Franklin, number-three is HOPACON, and that's what it is now. Lower perception of harm and the addition of the dispensary is going to increase the lower perception of harm, and it's going to have a negative impact on treatment admission in the community as well. That's my prediction. I called this heroin epidemic before I retired from police work, I'm retired seven years, and about ten years ago I said, we're going to have a problem with heroin because of the way they're pushing out these prescription drugs. And I hate to say that, we're going to have a problem with marijuana if they make it, if they continue pushing forward recreational use because of the number of treatment missions that I'm seeing anything. We'd be happy to share any of this information with you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have. Thank you.
I would just, you know, recount what Nick said, in addition, to do your own research before you make a decision. Go online, look where other places have placed dispensaries, and look at the problems that are occurring, and whether it was first just medical and then recreational. Like Nick said, they are in line, any dispensary that is a medical marijuana dispensary is in line to be, and let's be honest, it's a pot shop. You want to call it a dispensary, it becomes a pot shop. Look at what's happening. I grew up in the seventies, I am not a prude when it comes to understanding drug use. I deal every day with people that are struggling with drug use, but I also understand, some people also segue, and maybe there's a harm reduction factor, that although someone may have been, you know, shooting heroin one day, they're getting less and less, maybe they're using marijuana now, and eventually they'll go to an abstinent-based recovery. Me, we're not saying that there aren't certain possible uses for marijuana and people that are really sick that need it, surely. That is, that is, you know, a use for a drug, but like Nick said, we do have FDA-approved medications. There's nothing FDA-approved out of this. You're basically going into, so say for instance you have an elderly parent who's using marijuana for, say, a cancer, they run out of a certain product in HOPACON, they go to Florida, it's, there's no like regulated, they're not going to find the same product in the same potency. It's a very, very unscientific field right now. And having grown up in the seventies, you know, back then marijuana that was grown had about a three percent THC level. The marijuana today, it's a biologically enhanced, talk about, you know, yeah, you know, a genetically modified product. It is, the grown rye marijuana today has upwards of sixty to seventy to eighty percent THC. So this is not the pot that was smoked back in the seventies, this is a whole different animal. In addition, the oils, the edibles, oils upwards of a hundred percent THC. Like, I just think that it's a good, rather than, you know, we understand towns, look for ways to supplement income perhaps, and look at things that will enhance an area's tax base, but honestly, in this arena, I would look elsewhere to, and look elsewhere online. When you do go online and you are Googling things about marijuana dispensaries, don't go to the first one you see, go to things that are science-based. Smart Approaches to Marijuana, it's a site called SAM, has incredible information, and they've been following the problems that are going on in Colorado. You know, all the money that was supposed to be made from marijuana and the school system, look at what's happening in Colorado and see what's going on. And I think before you make a decision, it's really important to not base your thoughts on your own experience having, and this isn't about letting Uncle Joe smoke some pot in the backyard. This is about a big business, similar to the tobacco industry, that wants to hook kids young and hook them for life. This is another addictive industry, similar to alcohol and tobacco. And if you think anything else, and honestly, if someone's sick and needs a medication, whatever they need, if they're an end-of-life situation or real pain situation, give them whatever they need, whatever they need. But that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about a majority of people who had substance use problems, who are now getting medical marijuana cards for symptoms that can't really be diagnosed, similar to, you know, pain, you can't, you can't, you know. And honestly, I see more and more parents and young people coming to us for treatment who, listen, in the beginning marijuana works great. A kid smokes a joint, you know, anybody, if the brain hits the brain, it makes you relax. It's that, that continued use, it's incredibly dangerous for mental health, mental illness. We have already a mental illness population in our country that we don't know, you know, how to, how to handle, hospitalized, and treat. Not enough, there are not enough psychiatrists in Sussex County for the problems that we have right now. I think it's just an invitation to more and more problems. And like Nick said, you can get your marijuana delivered. One of the other problems I want to point out, and one of the reasons Ranchville voted no to this just a few months ago, was there are, there's online apps on your phone, one is called Weedmax, I suggest you look it up. It means anybody traveling through HOPACON that wants to buy marijuana at a dispensary, all they do is type in the zip code they're going to be in the town, and they know where to come for marijuana, and that would be on that Weedmax app, for sure. So.
One of the other issues that has come up with not just recreational use but medical use is diversion, and they're finding that some of the marijuana is being diverted, meaning that the people who were intended for are not getting it, it's going elsewhere. And that's not to say that the delivery is fault, what it's saying is that there are uses being done with marijuana.
Can I interrupt you one second? Not only that, people with legitimate medical marijuana cards are many times buying their marijuana on the street. They're getting a card, have the card, be able to prove when they do have marijuana, if they are stopped or in a situation, that they are a card-carrying medical marijuana card that's legitimate for them to have it. But I just spoke with a clinician who said people are often purchasing medical, purchasing marijuana outside of the dispensary, a lot of times because of the cost involved. This is confirmed with information by double-checking their medical marijuana card number through the online site, so that the clinicians are noticing that people aren't even purchasing medical marijuana. They're buying it on the street anyway because of the problems associated with the price and the quality and the knowledge.
So thank you all very much, like, if you'd like to ask any questions, I'm glad. So thank you. Let me spring with the council and public why you're here. The borough was approached by a company and inquired about a dispensary for marijuana, and so, not really in my comfort zone, so rather than proceed that, you know, the individual alliance with John Young, with John and myself, we're very active with drug prevention and we work closely with their central prevention. And so rather than make an uninformed decision, John was instrumental in getting you down here so that we could publicly have you talk about the issue with the council and the public, because ultimately the council will have to make a decision of some kind or other. And I would prefer that it's informed, and so that everybody has new information at the same time. That's why you're here primarily. Our community center works closely with the center, we applied for a grant, hopefully we can get that grant with your help, Nick.
Sure.
And we're going to bring some of them resources that you talked about, Anne Marie, to HOPACON, because we do have a drug problem, and we're addressing it, and this is one way that I think is the best way to address it, so, and that's information, information and data which you supplied. So I think, John, do you have anything to add before we open it?
No, other than thank you very much, it was very, very important, and I wrote several notes and I'm doing my homework.
So we take this very seriously, and I'm on the record, I am on the record, saying that if marijuana is legalized in the state of New Jersey, after it's legalized, I will introduce an ordinance prohibiting its sale, growing, storage in the borough of HOPACON. I can't do it now because I understand that if we do do it now, when they pass it, it will negate any existing ordinance. So we're prepared, I've asked my attorney to have an ordinance ready, so when it is legalized in the state of New Jersey as recreational, I will introduce this order in the borough of HOPACON, not allowing that.
I would suggest that if a dispensary is voted on and approved within borough, that you look at how the legal, how the statute is written, that will allow them to transition into recreational use, you may not be able to stop it.
Without their concern, and that's why you're here. And so, again, it'll be an informed decision.
They keep changing the way they write the statute for recreational, and that's how this, you know, if you have an ordinance that's already been passed, it becomes null and void. They threw that in there because towns already put passing ordinance.
That's right.
So another thing would be the transition of a medical dispensary to a recreational use dispensary. It's already permitted, the town may not be allowed to mandate recreational use.
Well, we have a lot of, and we'll keep getting information, so you might get another call from us for, for more information. So we're going to make an informed decision, the governing body will, and it's based on input from you all.
Thank you.
I have a question. Whoever approached you for the dispensary, was, were there incentive, incentives involved? Because there was, there was with Ranchville.
No, the question was, we like, we're thinking about, if I remember correctly, we're applying for a license in the state of New Jersey for a dispensary. We, for some reason, the other day came to HOPACON, they did come to our land use board and ask for information, and we said, well, you know, no decision's made, but that kind of struck a chord, that we need more information, but not on the level that they're at, but on the level of, you know, we have to make a decision that's going to affect our town significantly, you know. And so that's why I have a lot of faith in the center of prevention, we do good work, the individual alliance does good work, and we don't want to undo that work, if you will. So with that, I would entertain the public to ask you any questions, if that's okay with you. So.
Sure. I have a quick question. Go ahead. You had mentioned SAM, it's S-A-M, what's the A stand for? Smart Approaches to Marijuana. Is that SAM dot com?
Um, it's.
Dot org? It's.
Learn about SAM dot org.
That is it.
And there's another group called NJ Ramp, which is a New Jersey group associated with SAM. Don't ask me what the acronym is.
Responsible Approaches Marijuana Policy.
So this is such a sensitive issue, an important issue, we're not going to, we want all the information we can get there. So with that.
I'm going to give you my information also, I'll leave it with the clerk. If anybody has any questions, they want to reach out to me, send me an email, call my office, I'll be happy to give you more information, as much as I can.
Sure. You might be back here.
My pleasure. I like to pack them.
Yes, we do too. We kind of, we're kind of partial to it.
You are.
On your two thousand and eighteen admissions treatment in the county, I'm not sure if I got that middle patent, you started out with Newton and it went to Franklin, it wasn't Franklin. Okay, sure. If the public has questions, please ask.
Hi, Mary Ellen Levine. So first off, let me just preface by saying that I'm a nurse, and that we just had a task force presentation on medical marijuana. No disrespect to the center, and certainly your concerns, and certainly the concerns of the issues that were raised in regards to the actual dispensary, physical location, all of those things, I don't have a lot of information on that. But I can tell you that the medical card fraud is like frauding a driver's license now. It's a picture, it's a background check, it's very involved, it's hundreds of dollars to the person who's applying to it, which makes it actually very tough to get, in addition to anyone who is authorized in order to be able to obtain it, marijuana on someone else's behalf for medical use in New Jersey. The other thing I wanted to point out was that as far as the medication itself, the THC, there is medical doctors as well as pharmacy who are very versed in the dispensary techniques, and yes, the recommendation comes from the field, but that the actual dispensary goes from, it's not high dose down, it's low dose up, and it's very specific to the parts of the brain where the marijuana. And it's very specific to the parts of the brain where the marijuana, where that ingredient needs to interact in order for there to be blood brain barrier, if there needs to be, if we need to go to neurological issues and cover those types of things. It's very specific, it is a very exact science in that regard. But they do work from bottom up in order to get someone on the dose, on the medication. If the route is, yes, inedible, they will do that. But that is over time, and it's a, right, a, what do you call, relationship with the dispensary. The other thing is, from my understanding, as far as the issue of safety and security, that these dispensaries are not necess, I mean, I've not heard of one being storefronted. There's only, I think, six of them in New Jersey right now, and they're mostly from mid-state down. We don't have any of them in this area. And they're certainly not going to go to Uber in our outreach regards to home delivery in New Jersey. And that is certainly something that although is out there, there is no regulation to it at this point. So, you're not going to have people driving around with medical marijuana. And if you did, they would be vetted, the same as someone who was driving a Brink's truck. I mean, you're literally, it's literally got to be that precise, and there has to be a lot of things worked out before that'll ever happen. As far as New Jersey and recreational use marijuana, yeah, good luck. If you've ever tried to get anything passed through our legislature, you know that we're 20 years down the road easily on something that is going to look like this. And unfortunately for the fact that, that, what do you call, the AAA is saying that there is an increase in car accidents with regards to, under the influence, whatever that influence is. But if you want to equate it to recreational use marijuana, those are the states that are seeing one of the biggest increases in car accidents. I don't see New Jersey going to that. I mean, we're already, you know, pretty hype, paying into auto insurance state. So, certainly, if that were to come to the forefront, I will tell you, as a nurse, I would fight it tooth and nail. I think it is not a good way for New Jersey to go. But the fact that we're looking at medical marijuana use, and I will tell you that it has been used behind closed doors by medical patients for many years before we ever sat here. So, the opportunity to regulate it in any way is very appealing to me. And do you know why that is? Because as a nurse, if you're blowing it in my face, you're getting it on my skin, and if it's in my hair follicle and I get tested for marijuana use, I want to make sure that New Jersey is in a position to make sure that they're protecting nurses and practitioners in this state, because people are using it, and that's a fact. And the fact that it is medical at this point really speaks to the need for more research on the people who are surrounding the use of this. So, put it out there in the open, it is hugely important to me. Keep it out there in the open, absolutely. Put a dispensary up in North Jersey to make sure that people get what they need. I tell you, I would be all for it. Do I think I need it right here in a pack on? I tell you, it's tough to even get anything built in this state, including something without a 40-foot step back, or this county, and even this town. So, are there uphill battles for anybody that thinks there's going to be a dispensary here? I hope so. You know, but is it going to deter me from thinking that it needs to be here or somewhere nearby? No. And as far as opioid use, I will tell you that people do not use medical marijuana for the intent purpose of getting high. The purpose of medical marijuana is to get the medication into the system and use it in the proper way that it was needed to be for those patients that are going to get it. So, you know, I don't really see that, you know, there's much discussion as far as am I for, against needing to answer questions. They raise a lot of really good questions, and certainly, those are the takeaways that I would hope that you would look into. I also recommend, if you want more information about what I'm talking about with regards to the task force I spoke of, New Jersey State Nurses Association Medical Marijuana Task Force, you can look to the NJ SNA website, NJSN A dot org, speak to our CEO Judy Schmidt. And if there's any way that we can get you information on what we found out, we're working towards a physician statement on making sure that our providers, our nurses, are protected in regards to what is legalized so far. And that, you know, and they do have just an awful lot of really good information. And a lot, some of it speaks to maybe answering some of your questions. But I'm just not in authority to speak on it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. More questions? They're free. None? We'll, we'll continue as, if it does go anywhere, we'll continue to have presentations in public. And hopefully, we can make informed decisions if that day comes. And thank you very much again. I appreciate all the comments. All right, where are we? Proclamation, we don't have any tonight? Committee report.
Okay, I'll just keep it short for tonight. In two weeks, we have Officer Still coming into the community center, and he is educated and prepared to give, to give a presentation on the dangers of vaping. So, I encourage parents, children, anyone that just wants to learn more about it, and how it is not good for you. I, I would say, attend that, please, it'll be very informal. It'll be a discussion like it's taking place in your living room, but it will, it will be very real and very honest. Our collecting shoes for Souls to Soul, we are doing very well. We have a lot of shoes to give away. People brought in beautiful shoes. So, when they're being repurposed, I, I don't see a whole lot of expense going towards the repurposing. Our coat drive is complete. People have been very generous and have dropped off the most wonderful coats. And so, if you know someone that may have fallen on hard times, maybe just not so fortunate right now, please direct them to the community center, and they will be able to have a coat of their choosing. We have two racks from children, teens, women's and men's. And we will, we will also have a giving tree. It'll be a little bit different, those that may not be able to have a Christmas for their children. I want to make it so it's extremely private, so where I don't even know who it is. So, right now, this week, we're working on a giving tree that will be double blind, but that will make sure that anyone that may have trouble putting together a Christmas for their kids, we will be able to put some gifts underneath the tree this year. And I would also like to take this opportunity to clear up a rumor. At the Hopatcong Community and Resource Center, we are not diagnosing illnesses. We are not a medical facility. We do anything that benefits the community. But if someone is ill, they're being referred out to every urgent care or hospital in this area. If people want to come in and get a blood pressure, we're certainly capable of giving a blood pressure. Even pharmacies can do that. But false testimony about the community center, I will call it out. You're not hurting the council, you're hurting residents. Please stop. Thank you.
Bradley?
Mayor has gone a good part on helping John. Great.
I would just like to congratulate Mike for winning and being mayor for another four years. Bradley, I'd like to congratulate you, and also Jen, for winning. Next, Real Estate Committee met, and we have two ordinances, introduction of ordinances for sale of properties, 243 Squaw Trail, and another one at 101 Dartmouth Trail. This is just an introduction, I hope people will vote for that. We would like to move some of these properties that we have on the list. And then, there's another introduction of ordinance regarding the water billing. And we're looking at changing the dates to January 1st, April 1st, July 1st. To make it more in line with everything else. That's it. Thank you.
You're up.
I'll start with Recreation. The Recreation, a few weeks ago, had their Halloween parade and costume contest. I think they had 60 prizes for the costume contest in January. We are experiencing a severe lack of coaches, so some of the teams are limited. We have a movie night coming up, December 4th. Movie's going to be toy story at that movie, because it's December, or it's the holiday movie. We have Santa Claus there. They give away ornaments with child's name on it, there's cookies and water, so it's a, it's a nice event. I believe Mrs. Claus is there as well. The Police Training Facility Committee, we met with DPW not long ago. We're just working out a light schedule for them to start bringing in material that we'll be using to build the access road and the berms, the impact berms, and some of the soundproofing berms. Environmental Commission, we had a new woman from DEP there. And one of our members, Willis Scantleberry, went to a four-day seminar, which was very intense, from like 8:00 in the morning until 8:00 at night, up in Stokes State Forest. They did seminars on different forest issues. She is now what they refer to as a woodland steward. And one of the things she brought back is another invasive species. There's a spotted lanternfly that's now in the U.S., and it'll pass various treaties. A good thing, though, especially if you're a Batwoman or Batman fan, is that bats are on the rise. Bats are actually starting to come back. So, that's bad news for the world mosquito. We discussed some grant opportunities. We discussed, again, I mentioned it before, some kind of ribbon kind of ceremony at the Rain Garden. We also discussed sustainable jersey and maintenance of the Roland May Eve Bird Sanctuary and the Lake Hopatcong Foundation Trail. Municipal Alliance, we had someone from the county give us a private vaping seminar, which was very informative. Some of the highlights from that were, one out of three people that vape starts smoking eventually. The use of vaping has doubled in the last year. One pod, which is what they put in those little electric vapes, that's equal to 20 to 40 cigarettes. So far, 5.6 million people under the age of 18 have died from cancer-related illnesses. Diacetal, which is one of the chemicals that's very responsible for popcorn lung, that's found in most of the chemical flavor pods that they sell. And we're starting to notice a rise in mysterious lung illnesses that they're attributing to vaping. Hero Boys just finished. They had 43 boys, and Hero Boys is not just about running. They, they have a lot of people come in and speak to them. They had Lee Russon from the New York Giants come in and talk to them about his life and some of the things that he saw as he was growing up. They have people from the fire department, the police department come in. They had a gentleman, Mark Williams, who was a Hopatcong resident at one time. He's a USA master track and field competitor, competes all over the world. He comes in and talks to the boys, so it's, it's not just about running. We're, we're looking to get back involved with the seniors electronics, where we get some high school students to help seniors out with their electronic woes. I'll be first in line. We have a movie actually, a week from this Friday, November 15th, movie night at the high school auditorium. The movie is Dumbo. And I also would like to congratulate all the Hopatcong residents who were successful in their bid for public office. Sylvia Patillo, Anthony Fasano for Freeholder, Mike Francis for Mayor, Brad Hoppercraft, and Jen Johnson for Council, Nicole Schubert, Warren Gallagher, and Alex McLean for Board of Education. Thank you. I'm done.
All right, you're up.
Firewise Committee has not met since the last meeting. They don't have any reports there. However, the Chamber of Commerce, our council meeting is this Friday morning. That's an November meeting. And the county-wide business, business breakfast is next Tuesday, November 12th. Right?
Mayor, the Sewer and Water Committee met, and the police announced that the sewer rate study is now published on our website review. Item four on the ordinances is an introduction of ordinance 26, 2019, which talks about the rates. The public hearing will be at the next advertised meeting. 26, is that what it is? 26th of November?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, 26th of November. So, you'll have a couple of weeks to review the rate study, and hope Karen can ask one of the questions.
Thank you. Okay, public comment? All interested in motion, open the meeting to public.
Go, man.
Second, all in favor? All right, welcome public. Comments? Come on up. And give your name to the court board.
Keith Breckling, 443 Rivers Street, Rose. I'm looking down the ordinances here, and on number four, it doesn't necessarily say what it pertains to. And at this point.
The introduction.
That's the sewer rate.
It's the sewer rate.
Sewer rate?
Yeah.
Thank you.
For public? 1-1, come on up.
I have a lot of, I have some questions. David Harris, 125 Good Time Avenue, in Hopatcong. I have some questions about the animal control. And we have, I noticed on the second page, there's a September Animal Control Report. Where is this available?
Look it up. If you request it, look it up. It's a lot of paper, so we don't print it off.
Okay.
But if you request it, you certainly can.
When can I pick it up?
Tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. A couple of questions. A couple of years ago, the animal control officer we had was husky. It looked like he could handle a deer or a big animal. I noticed now we have an animal control officer who's a petite, young woman. And I was just wondering, how is the person hired for this position? It seems like it's a rough job.
Okay, let me, let me see if I can answer that.
No. So, she has a cell phone? So, she, she, she's required to have certain training, she's required to have certain, certain license to serve as an animal control officer. And there's, I would suggest that in all the reports I read, there's probably no handling of years or larger.
We did a snake.
She's quite capable.
Yeah, she did a snake.
It's actually really, really inappropriate to think that because she's a woman, she couldn't take care of these things.
No, it's not limited.
No, that's, that's what you're saying, it's inappropriate, she's qualified.
Okay, okay. I'm looking at weight, you know.
We're not going to hire somebody based upon weight, move on.
Okay. The, what is required for the pound to accept a cat or a dog? I mean, are there any requirements? Do they have to be native to a Hopatcong, or they can, or if they're wand, are they wandering around? Or how do you accept animals? I mean, you know.
So, so the animal, so there isn't, there isn't like admission criteria. The animal control officer encounters situations where a dog is lost, stray, abandoned. Same with a cat, injured, sick, and the animal control officer makes the decision that, for the benefit of the public and the benefit of the animal, the animal should be taken. And then, from there, a whole series of decisions are made about whether we keep it. Maybe there's an owner who claims it, maybe it needs treatment.
And she captures the dog or the cat or whatever it is, and puts it in a truck?
Yes. Sure does.
Okay. And the animal control officer, is that a full-time job or part-time?
Full-time.
Full-time?
True.
And from what I gather, she's involved also under the supervision of the Chief of Police?
Correct.
One other question I had is, the court system. Do we have a certain amount of money that's in the budget that we expect to get from court fines and from payment for public defenders and other auxiliary charges that the court imposes?
Yes.
How much is that?
I have my seat.
I don't have a budget.
It depends on how many bad guys we get.
And is the judge, is the judge under any pressure to reach a certain level?
Absolutely not.
No, no.
Absolutely not. The courts operate under the court system, and they're under the supervision of the Superior Court of the state of New Jersey. Not a. Not a, the Superior Court makes the rules. Am I wrong, Tom?
The legislature sets the ranges for fines. Some of those fines stay here in the borough, some of those fines get paid to the state, some of the court costs stay here in the borough.
Right. Because I read a couple of years ago that the judge was taken off the bench because he geared a lot of fines to the municipality rather than giving it to the state.
Yeah, I think he was, I think in that case, that he was actually violating the statute saying where the money was supposed to go.
I knew he seemed like he was under influence to give it to the town rather than giving it to the state.
I'm quite positive that our judge is supposed to follow the statute.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome public? Come on up.
It's been good, good work that they're doing on the streets. However, if anybody pulls out a Florida, starts to go up the Stanhope Road, they miss the corner. There's a drop walk, and then you come up and you hang your buckle up on the curriculon blacktop. Those guys go in and take a look at that. I saw it yesterday.
That's going towards Stanhope?
Huh?
Going towards Stanhope?
Yeah, when you come out of Florida, you make the right to go to Stanhope, the corner. There's a lot of loose blacktop where they dropped it, and there's no transition. It's just a weird curve.
So that's where the county came, and put that new road in, blacktop. That was a county blacktop.
Yeah, well, that didn't match up with Florida. It didn't match up with Florida.
We'll give the county a hearing call and let them know that we have a concern.
Yeah.
Thank you. Welcome. Here we go. Second. Come on up.
Welcome. Everybody knows me.
Give the name to you.
Q.
Q. Q. Ewing?
Q. Ewing. William. I'm not, I, eight minutes.
Thank you.
All right, so I hear that there is a bill or ordinance or something that you guys are considering cashing in regard to the Airbnb as far as insurance?
Yeah.
All right, are you guys aware that the limits that you're requiring are not possible on a standard homeowner's insurance policy? The liability, yes?
No. I'm not familiar with it currently.
Okay, well, the limits that you're requiring are not available on a standard homeowner's policy. And there are carriers in the state of New Jersey who will cover insurance for Airbnbs and the rentals and whatnot. But the limits that you're requiring are ridiculous. They're not even available anywhere. Anybody hear that? Anybody do any research on the limits of liability and what policies would be available for the rentals of the Airbnbs? No?
Well, we're getting aware of it now, then.
Okay, good. I'm glad I can help out.
You know about what you said, Mike, I wrote it on the floor earlier.
No, not an umbrella policy. An umbrella policy doesn't cover Airbnbs at all. Personal liability is what you're requiring as far as the limits, and those limits are not available on a standard homeowner's insurance policy, which is an H.O. three form in the state of New Jersey. It's not available. So basically, you're asking for something that doesn't exist.
Why wouldn't you get a commercial landlord policy?
Yeah. It doesn't exist.
I'm pretty sure landlord policies...
Landlord policies exist, but the standards that you're requiring do not exist in the state of New Jersey. That would be a D.C. three, that would be the form, or D.C. one, or D.C. two. There is no endorsement for Airbnb for that amount of liability. The maximum is half a million dollars. You want to know how I know? Ask me how I know.
We understand that, Q.
You sure you don't want to ask me how I know? You look like you might want to ask me how I know.
I think.
You sure?
No, we didn't. You're very informative with that. Maybe we could...
What you're asking, what he's referring to as commercial policy would be that an individual requires to get a commercial policy, right? As an individual in New Jersey, right? You can get a million liabilities, a million liability in a commercial policy. But that reduces the coverage for the homeowner. The different form of... You want the form of...
So what would you...
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is there are limits that you can request, right? You can request that the homeowner have the endorsement. On, there are carriers that offer that endorsement specifically for Airbnb. It shows the language on the policy. It is a half a million dollars. Now, as far as umbrella policies, like I said, they don't cover Airbnb. Not something that happens when they come out with that product out, and you first let them know. The maximum amount required is a half million unless Airbnb owns both directly through Airbnb, but even that is restricted. There are restrictions to that, and I don't have them with me to lay them all out for me, but that liability is unrestricted. And what you guys are looking for is just not available, a million dollars is not available. A half a million is the standard coverage.
I did. Can you help us? We like that section.
I can.
Because you know a lot about it.
I can.
Send us an email of a rewrite that we can blow through charges and stuff. That'd be great.
What I'll do too, is I will, I will add that...
As a matter of fact, I've been working with a carrier, Conest Rock. I can move him in on it as well.
We're going to table, I'm going to ask the council to table that for tonight, because the spirit of what we're trying to do is we don't, not up against Airbnb. No, we want to make sure it's done.
No, I understand what you're trying to do, which is why I'm not going after permits and my thing, the additional fees that you guys are trying to collect. Why, I just wanted to make the board aware of is that the limits that you're requesting may get darn near impossible for Airbnb to host with what you're requiring. And if a standalone, you know, I'm not, I'm conservative. I'm all about saving money at the end of the day. And I can get where you want to charge the fees and the permits and things like that and regulate that way. I think I totally understand that. But what I'm saying is the limits of liability just impossible for what you're requiring is it's not going to be...
That's not the intent of the...
Yeah.
That was not the intent of the...
No, and I realize that, but I just figured I'd bring it to you.
Okay, so will you work with us to make sure that we don't...
Yeah, absolutely.
We want to make sure this enterprise is okay. I've been contacted by the Airbnb Corporation.
Right.
And they don't have a problem with our ordinance.
Right.
And it's strange that they didn't mention that.
They didn't mention it. They don't mention it to the Airbnb host either.
Wow.
Yeah. Their policies are very limited.
So we didn't do this in a vacuum.
Yeah.
Okay, there were, Airbnb company was involved. So he'll work with us, we'll, we'll make that so it is...
You have a question, guy in the pink shirt?
Excuse me?
Cross-concerteering.
Did you say guy in the pink shirt?
Yeah, I don't know.
Right there?
Right.
No, I don't have one.
I thought I heard from cross-concerteering.
So how do you know we weren't talking about the Giants?
I don't know, that's why I asked you to have a question.
I have no question?
Oh, okay.
All right.
Want to make sure you got all the information?
Guy in the pink shirt?
Yeah, I mean, it is pink, and I, I don't have a glasses one.
So Q, will you, will you work with us, so we can make that?
I absolutely will.
So thank you very much. Thank you for being of attention.
Thank you.
Welcome public?
Hi, Jennifer Johnson, Sickner Riddicombe. Congratulations, Brad.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I look forward to working with you guys. I just had a question. Bob McBreyer was here the last two meetings that we had, October and September 18th. He was going to get back to me with the secret information on the maximum setbacks for the sewers, and I've been waiting since September 18th to that answer.
I don't know the question.
What is the maximum setback on the sewer?
I don't know what that means.
Okay, beginning of September, I was up here, and I talked about, you told me that there was sewer across the street from me was impossible because of the maximum...
No, I definitely did not say that. I said that the sewer you referred to was exempted because the borough engineer determined to recommend a waiver. And I remember that there was a discussion about how far it was from the road, but I never said it was impossible.
You said that there was a maximum, it exceeded the maximum setback for the sewer and the grinder. I can, I can, I can look it up. It was the beginning of the first September meeting, and Bob was here, Mr. McBreyer was here, the second meeting in September, and the first meeting in October. He said in September he would get me that information.
I'm not familiar with the distance that you're referencing. I think that the engineer has the ability to recommend a waiver where the conditions are too difficult to instruct the sewer to do. But I'm not aware of any specific distance.
Okay, because we asked for a waiver. We opened a waiver, or at the very beginning of all this, we requested information exempting that property from the sewer. And we were told that it did not exist.
No, no, historically, there's been a setback of 300 feet that was in the sanitary code, and I don't think our ordinance has a specific... There was, there was a setback, I believe, when the sewers started within the sanitary code, and if you exceeded more than 300 feet, you would be...
You would be exempted. Okay. That's fine, but there's a, house, three houses down, that's more than 300 feet setback, and they have a grinder on the perimeter, so why weren't they waived as well?
Well, it's not, it's a, it's, I don't know the specific circumstances. They may have had a failing septic system, and they may have wanted to connect if it was a bit more economical. I don't, I don't know.
Right.
Don't notice that.
I understand.
But that is a provision, and it's that, you know, provided that your septic system is not failing, you're exempt from that distance. But if you do have a failing septic system...
So what happens now if their septic system fails now?
If their septic system, if it fails, they should be approaching the health department to either get that waiver or connect it to the sewer.
They would have to apply a waiver.
Yeah, yeah, they would have to. Because if their septic, if their septic system is failing, it has to be re-permitted. And that's the first thing, and the health department would right away, is there sewer availability within a practical distance?
Okay, thank you. Are we going to, are we getting the sewer reset today?
It's on the webpage.
That's the 14-page one. Isn't there like a 100-page report?
No, no, it's a full one up on site.
Up on, it's only 14 pages?
That's the...
There's 26 pages.
That's it.
Oh, it's only 26 pages.
26.
Within the original 100 and something pages? But we were told 114 pages.
That was for the committee. That was the information for the committee.
Oh, I see, I see. So this is the full report, is that...
This is the full, this is the full final public report.
Okay, so Mr. Rush, if you're for us to ask questions?
Not for that. At the public hearing.
Oh, no, no, I'm for, oh, the auditor to ask questions, I mean...
He's going to be here at the, at the meeting with public...
Got it, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Welcome public? One, one? Second. All in favor? Aye. Vote. We're back. Okay, approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 2nd meeting. Second.
The top camp.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts? Yes. Mr. Shinburne?
Yes. Yes. Yeah. Approval of bill?
Anyone need anything out? Not hearing or seeing any mayor, I'll move the bill list in its entirety. One second there.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Mr. Padula?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts? Yes. Mr. Shinburne?
Yes. Yes. I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda. So move it. All in favor? Aye. Vote. We'll move. Ordinance introduction, ordinance 23, 2019, amendment to chapter 51 of the Borough Code, an ordinance to amend chapter 51 of the Code of the Borough of Patagon, Sussex County, New Jersey regarding billing water accounts. That dischanges all the dates related to this. Second. Call roll, please.
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Mr. Padula?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts? Yes. Mr. Shinburne?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance 24, 2019, auction of 243 quad trail. An ordinance of the Borough of Patagon, County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, authorizing the sale of certain property owned by the Borough and not required for public purposes, and more commonly known as 243 quad trail, block 50208, lot 24. So I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Vote. And that auction date will be November 25th.
Well, if you put in happy, if you put in happy auction...
Oh, okay, never mind. Ordinance 25, 2019, auction of 101 Dartmouth Trail. An ordinance of the Borough of Patagon, County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, authorizing the sale of certain property owned by the Borough and not required for public purposes, and more commonly known as 101 Dartmouth Trail, block 40505, lot 17. So move it. Aye. All in favor? Aye. Vote. Ordinance 26, 2019, amendment of Borough Code 186-9, an ordinance of the Borough of Patagon, County of Sussex, replacing section 186-9 of the Code of the Borough of Patagon, and that would be the sewer rate. So move it. Second. All in favor? Aye. I propose to move. Now, the final hearing on the ordinance 22, 2019, short-term rental. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to...
Table it in the next meeting.
Till the next meeting, yes. We're going to work with an expert in the field to make sure that we get it right. All in favor? Aye. Vote. We'll move. Resolution 2019, 167, approval of the duty and conversation for administrative clerk. I'll move it. Second. Call roll, please.
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Mr. Padula?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts? Yes. Mr. Shinburne?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Yam?
Yes.
Resolution 2019, 168, authorizing a loan application for any in New Jersey environmental infrastructure financing program, which would be the asset management. So move it. Aye. Call roll, please.
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Mr. Padula?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts? Yes. Mr. Shinburne?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Yam?
Resolution 2019, 169, frequent works approval application for Hudson Avenue St. George Sanctuary. And I would make a comment on this, that this is, this is necessary for us to seek help from the State of New Jersey on, for a grant for that. So move it. Second. Call roll, please.
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Mr. Padula?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Resolution two thousand nineteen, one seventy-two, determination for the issuance of funds authorized by ordinance eight, two thousand nineteen.
So move.
Second. Call the roll please.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Mr. Padula?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Resolution two thousand nineteen, one seventy-three, authorize, authorization to purchase electricity, main load through online auction.
So move.
Second. Call the roll please.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Mr. Padula?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand nineteen, one seventy-four, authorization to purchase electricity, street lighting through online auction. Second. Call the roll please.
Mr. Hoppercam.
Yes.
Mr. Padula?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Full business? None? New business discussion regarding NJDCA best practices survey. And I'll ask Lorraine Rosetti, our CFO, to talk about that because it's very important that we do, to approach this process.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm here to talk to you, it's too much helpful. The best practices survey actually started in two thousand ten under Governor Christie. And I believe the original mindset was to make municipalities more accountable, to measure how municipal governments budgeted and how we manage our fiduciary responsibility. It definitely has improved municipal accountability because every year you're graded on, on the survey. It's published, it's released to the public. Now you have to submit it to community report. Which is a really fun exercise, our faculty. In two thousand nineteen, the best practices had ninety-nine questions. I think it started around thirty to forty questions, now it's up to ninety-nine. It actually lists eighty-four, but there's so many subtopics, it's really ninety-nine. As well as financial considerations. They also touch on transparency, shared services, procurement, authorities, which we don't have any, ratables and pilot programs, cybersecurity and planning and development, sewage and stormwater question, and also on affordable housing. Survey asks questions about our personnel policy, of social media policy. Overtime, it makes us ensure that we are compliant with equal opportunity, laws and regulations are anti-discrimination, and fair labor training. This year, it really focused on some infrastructure, making sure that we're funding properly for our infrastructure, making sure that we don't have leaky audit findings. Also that we are within the maximum amount that we're allowed to budget for fire and emergency service. It used to be that the survey was very easy for the finance officer to complete. It no longer is. I want to thank John Luskey for giving me an education this year on what a CSO is. Does anybody know what that is? No, I do. Okay, yeah, Brian probably does. It's a, um, CSO system is a combined sewer overflow system. And I learned that we don't have one, but we do reduce our stormwater runoff through the, quote, John, which I typed into the best practices survey, through the implementation of local land use regulation. And I added a tidbit, that we have a rain garden and that we use Birmingham to help stave off the negative impacts of stormwater. The survey very easily shows us where we're succeeding, where we need to increase our efforts. This year, it actually provides us with some references for tools so that we can help ourselves get to the area that we really want to be better in. Each municipality is scored. You have to get a thirty or better so that you don't lose any of your state aid. The Borough of Apcon gets sixty-eight thousand dollars in state aid. We are not going to lose any of that. We scored forty-one point five, so we were not in any danger, even close to the third point that we needed. The actual survey, I'm not sure if it's on the website yet. If it's not, it'll be up tomorrow. It's several pages long, shows eighty-four questions. And if everyone has the opportunity to review it, taxpayers, they definitely should because it'll give them a good area to see where we're going to focus our efforts to make improvements. And it'll also help kind of rate us against other municipalities and see how we're standing up. Lucky enough to have Mr. Schindler.
And we have an effort in the field. If you would, explain why, what this is so important to our, to our borough.
From Mayor, to come to him with Archer and Greiner, bond counsel to the, to the borough. But my prior life, I was the director of the Division of Local Government Service. I promulgated the best practice questionnaire back when it was thirty to forty questions. It was designed to try to get some underperforming municipalities by threatening to withhold a portion of their final A payment to comply with the best practices designed to bring some of the lower performing municipalities up. It's important, Mayor, because it's a self-analysis of the operations of the municipality. And it also tries to get some type of standardization among practices. If you're evaluating shared services, if you're doing simple things like reconciling bank accounts, just like, so it's a great self-analytical tool. And as I told the mayor briefly before the meeting, I used to oversee five hundred sixty-five municipalities and Apcon was never one of my problems. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks, Brian.
All right. So thank you very much for that. And it's, it's important that the public know what we have, what we do every day, you know? Our, our professionals just don't come in and look out the window and talk on the phone. They're really busy doing stuff like this. And, and I watched Lorraine go through this, go through this best practice thing. And it's, and it's, I would best say it's painful, but, but she got through it. So thank you very much for that. And as part of my report, I would ask Lorraine, I just want you to make a comment. We've been working really hard on our debt, so I'd like you to report on that.
Okay, just, I know I missed.
Yes.
Okay. In two thousand ten, we had an overall total debt for our general, our water and our sewer of almost fifty-four million dollars. And just from two thousand ten to two thousand eighteen, that decreased to thirty-eight million. So we took off fifteen point eight million or a twenty-nine percent reduction in our gross debt from two thousand ten to two thousand eighteen. And that's, that's pretty amazing. Not only are we, of course, following all of our bond schedules, all of our, our other notes, our NJEIP notes and loans, but we're also being a little more aggressive in paying off our short-term debt, our notes. Kudos to the government for budgeting that way and getting this down as far as it has come in that short period of time. From two thousand ten to two thousand twenty-two, so a twelve-year look, we're going to decrease by twenty-eight point four million dollars, so fifty-two and a half percent. So that's a huge, huge reduction. We have a really aggressive debt repayment and we're able to keep our taxes pretty much flat over the last couple of years and still be aggressive with our debt payment. We're, we're doing really well.
Thank you. Does this sound better when it comes in? They have met in Creighton for the construction plan, which have been approved. And probably within the next few weeks, they should be applying to the borough for the construction plans to start sometime in December, I hope. Depending on the bureaucrats down in Creighton because they don't make life easy for us. We still continue to work on issues with the lake. I was on a phone call today with the Lake Foundation. Through the winter, we're going to try to see if we come up with some plan that address the issue early next year because we simply cannot have another year like we had last year. We simply cannot do that. It will, it will really affect our businesses badly. They can't afford another year like this at all. We've had forty percent more or less in revenue to many of our businesses. The marina are, are getting killed, not only ours, but over on the other side of the lake. And they cannot, cannot afford them losses. We've been very aggressive with the state. We have the federal government and you'll see us talk about extending sewer lines. It's not just for the fun of it. What we found is that more than fifty percent of the phosphorus going into the lake comes from septic, primarily lakefront. So one of the focuses I have is, is I want to start with Hudson Avenue, take a look at that. I've asked the state and we've had some very active conversations with the DEP and the federal government to ask for funding for that. So we want to do that in such a way so that we don't create a hardship for our utility users because as you know, that money can only come from the utility. And so my plan is to get it funded through the state and, and federal government, not the least of which is Department of Agriculture. I've talked to them and I have proposed, it's not just an infrastructure thing. So I'm, I'm going after it from a clean water aspect and also a health aspect. Because if our lake doesn't get better, it's not, it's going to be the health of our people also, not just the health of our businesses. Bacteria don't have a way of going away, you don't treat them. And so our intent is to treat them. You'll hear me talk about short-term, midterm, long-term. Short-term, we do have treatments. I have treatment purchase order ready if the state will ever approve them. But the long-term is taking a look at, at the sources of phosphorus, not the least of which is septic. So you'll hear me talk about that. I know it's a source of septic, you know, well, the sewer is such a mess, we can't extend the lines. Well, you know, the, 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 the health of our lake has changed the landscape of how we manage our infrastructure tremendously. So we have to pay attention to that. But we have to do that in such a way as we don't, we don't cripple our utilities or add more cost onto our residents. So the object here is to appeal to the federal and state government and help us with this. They certainly help South Jersey with the dunes to protect, to protect that from storms. And I understand that and that's necessary, but we also need to protect our lake and our people. And so I'm, I'm simply asking the state and the feds to use the same criteria to aid, to help us here in Northwest Jersey as they do in South Jersey. And I don't think that's such a bad argument. And I, and I have had some pretty good conversations with them. So I'm hoping to report back soon that we've had some success with that. So I'm gonna, I, I really start the conversation with them is at least pay for half of it. And that's the minimum that we're at.